Again, not knowing what it is or how much time.
They're like infinitely, I just see school got out. But I've never seen them. Who are you living with? And they're out at all hours. And I'll take, there's been several.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
There's been several times I'll take the dog out at 12:30, 1:00 in the morning to a, if he comes to get a tickle, he's been 14.
There's this timeframe, so it would be effective in this day.
Guys, two or three together just walking down the street. I'm like, who are you? Yeah, I don't say anything, but I'm keeping myself, who are you and where do you belong? Because you don't belong there. Probably 1920. These are all the ones. So I'm like.
Yeah, this kid was around until April 10th. No, it's not. You know, when prostitute was, you know, where, where the sale happened last September. It's easy right now. So we may need to see if we can create some way to fill that gap.
The new chair.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Didn't you tell him? Oh, you've got to tell him.
How's the tooth?
Tell him. Hey, you. How's your tooth?
Yeah.
I said, he's supposed to be here tonight, but I don't know. You missed last meeting, you can hear what happened.
Hi, Jerry. It's in the minutes. Yeah.
Can you read your minutes yet? He's like, uh-oh. You guys are both chicken. It was your idea.
Are we ready? Okay. Call to order, the August 19th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, roll call.
Barbie, Buckley.
Here.
Castro.
Here.
Kroll.
Here.
Neer.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Atherton.
Here.
Quorum is present.
And next to the approval of the agenda, are there any additions, delete, additions, deletions, or corrections? And if none, I'll take a motion.
Motion.
So moved by Buckley.
Second.
Second by Kroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, we invite you to come to the podium. And there being none, I will move on to approval of the July 5th, 2017 minutes. Any additions, corrections, or deletions? If none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Wright.
Second.
Second by Buckley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And then the July 19th minutes, any additions, deletions, or corrections? If none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. There being no old business, we move to new business. A discussion of the public hearing procedures. Given the situation that took place at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, I wanted to open up to quick discussion about the public hearing procedures and any ideas or any ideas that you may have about how we handle the public participate, or the public hearings. I've spoken to one commissioner who, we discussed this a little bit, and I also have talked to Dan about this as well. At one point, I don't remember when the change had taken place, where we've been doing the public hearings now, but at one point, we used to not close the public hearing until, just before we voted as a commission. So that that gave the community an opportunity to continue speaking if, after discussion had taken place with the petitioner, and then after the city had commented, so that they had an opportunity, if they learned any new information, that would give a, give them more opportunity to speak. And so I would like to move back to that, given some suggestions that I've had, and think it's probably not a bad idea. And again, I don't know, I can't remember when or how we changed closing it sooner than we did, but last, the last meeting, that would have helped to have had it open a little longer. So I'm open to suggestions and discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Could we review, I'm asking to refresh our memory, our collective memory of how we do things. So we opened the public hearing, and then what happens? People talk, everybody, anybody who can or wants to speak will do so?
Well, we open up the public hearing at the beginning, after we announce what it is.
Correct.
Then the public hearing is open. And then we give the petitioner the opportunity to present, do their presentation.
Correct.
Then we give the city the opportunity, sometimes it's vice versa. And then we allow the public to make comments or ask questions. If there are any questions, then we open those questions back to whomever we need to answer. Then I give them another ability to speak, and then we've closed it. And then we've had our discussion, and can I ask any questions to the petitioner or the city? And then we vote.
So, and again, just for, to refresh our memory, before the chair closes the public participation on that item, we, the commissioners, are able to speak, question, so on and so forth. Is that correct? I just want, I'm refreshing our memory here.
We've been closing it prior to us having discussion and asking questions for our information. And I'd like to keep it open until after that.
So the commissioners, certainly, at least by practice, speak among ourselves after closing the public participation, but we are free to speak before the closing of the public participation, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
So the problem is, is that we open the public forum, the city will say their piece, the petitioner will say their piece, community members say their piece, we close it, we talk, petitioner says more, city may say more, all of a sudden, someone in the audience wants to talk more, and we've closed the public forum, and technically.
Correct.
They can't speak.
Correct.
So that's the problem. So do we open the public forum, let everyone say their piece, close it so we can talk without any interruption, then reopen it again for a new briefing? I mean, traditionally, we haven't bothered reopening. Someone raises their hand and is persistent long enough, and we just kind of let them come up, which, I don't know.
I think closing and then reopening is probably procedural issue, so I think.
So it's just one of those things, once everyone on the commission is happy and petitioners are happy, reopen it again?
Yeah, I think what the chair mentioned, is closing it right before your motion. Because if you're deliberating it, and there's questions you have for the applicant, we, and it should be open then to anybody in the audience that wants to ask a question from further discussions that's happening, maybe between the commission and applicant. The public should be allowed to ask, should be allowed to ask questions too, if new information comes up. So I think keeping the hearing open as long as possible is, pray the direction to head.
So it'll be open while we were in discussion?
Yes.
So essentially, it would just stay open until we're ready?
Stay open even after the recommendation closes.
Until all discussion is completely over.
So you wouldn't make a motion to close the public forum until we got to the point where you had, like, basically, nobody's saying anything, and we're comfortable asking it, and then we would close it, and then ask for a motion, or any last itty-bitty bit of conversation we'd have?
Correct. Now, as you know, when we have a motion, we have the ability to discuss that motion. That would not then be open to the public. That's ours, yes.
So in principle, there is, I mean, it sounds to me, from what we're saying here, that there is no need to an actual change in any form or fashion of the, of our procedure, of opening the public participation, closing the public participation motion, and then finally closing that.
Yeah. That procedure stays, it's just when you do close the hearing. And there's nothing in the municipal code, on the chapter on the Planning and Zoning Commission, the bylaws, and nothing in the UDO that says exactly when you have to close the hearing, so.
And I didn't want to make this sole decision, I wanted to open it up to you guys to get your thoughts on what you think, and.
So there is a, I mean, in principle, what we're saying is that there needs to be a change in the dynamic of us, the commissioners, in during the dealing of a particular item, and that change is that we have to be aware of the fact that our comments may very well be more openly challenged by members of the public, because we will have a discussion, the public participation is not going to be over, and our comments, you know, will be either reinforced or challenged by, by public participants, which is a change in our dynamic, a little bit of the culture on this, on this group.
And the commission may even have a question for one of the residents. You know, when you're deliberating, maybe there's something you want to get clarified that was said before, or, so you may want to ask not only the applicant, maybe the resident, another question or follow-up.
And that may be partially when we made that, I don't remember when we made that shift, but it may have been, to what you just asked, partially why that shift was made, so that our discussion gives us that opportunity to have that conversation with the petitioner or with the city, and that's why I'm, I want to, I want your input, that's, that's why. If you don't think that that's an appropriate idea, then we can continue. But if you have another idea too, I want to hear that as well.
How often has it been an issue? Or is it, it hasn't been an issue?
So I honestly will say, in the little more than seven years that I've been involved on the commission, the incident that happened two weeks ago was the first time that I believe a person had stood up as they did after the public hearing had closed. However, with that being said, we never used to close the public hearing until just before we voted. So that change happened over the last few years.
Well, I remember.
Maybe three years.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I remember one instance where, and it was, this must have been at least a year ago, where somebody from the public almost vented at us at the fact that we were so quiet and so silent. And I remember my response in saying, you know, I have been there in city council meetings where most of the discussion occurs after the meeting has been, after the public participation has been closed, and then you have this debate among the decision makers, the ones who are going to vote on that item, and then public participation is over. You don't have a chance to challenge, to question, to bring a new dimension to the whole issue, whatever it is. So I think there, it really, I really believe that it is on us to be open to that more open, ongoing discussion with the public before that public participation part is closed. At the same time, I think we should be judicious on deciding when we decide, when we are going to say certain things. I mean, I reserve my right to say something after the public participation is over. But I also should be as open as possible before that section is over, such that people know what I, what I, what is in my mind, and have an opportunity to reinforce that, support me or challenge me.
So would it help the dynamic if, if the meeting was conducted where we've opened the public hearing, we've started, the petitioner, the city, the public has had a chance to speak, then we've had a chance to speak, then close the public hearing, and then have our discussion before our vote?
Could you repeat that again?
So, so we open the public hearing, the petitioner speaks, the city speaks, then we give the public an opportunity, then we have the opportunity to ask questions, we can ask the public if they have any other, which we've done before, we've given them a second chance or a third chance to speak. Then we close the public hearing and have our discussion after that fact, and then we vote.
Isn't that what we're doing now?
I don't think we've been asking, we may not be having the discussion that maybe David is, I mean, sometimes we do ask some questions, but maybe not as intense.
Your point was, is that we keep it open until you actually call for a motion for a vote. That's what you said, that's what was said at the beginning.
Right.
Now you're saying.
Based on what David was just explaining.
Okay, so now you're proposing, keeping the public hearing open until it appears that, for all practical purposes, the public is absolutely done talking, and this interchange between the commissioners and the public is done, or apparently done.
I'm just asking.
And you will make that decision as chair.
Based, yes, I would ask, I'd have to ask if we're complete with our discussion, and ask the public if anybody else wants to speak before we close it. David's comment about us having our discussion, then opening that potential ability to the public, then questioning us, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm just trying to figure out here.
So procedure-wise, nothing would change?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, okay.
But so, yeah, procedure-wise, this is not going to change, but.
Okay.
But if it has not been closed, and David Castro starts opening his mouth and saying X, Y, Z, and the conversation starts here, we will be more subject to an exchange with the public.
Which we have had before.
Yeah, okay, so the procedures really aren't changing.
Just the time, just when it happens.
Just the timeframe, yeah.
Just what?
Just kind of the timeframe, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's about timing, pretty much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Maybe one, one way to think about it is, the purpose of the public hearing is to gather facts, and to ask questions, and clarify, and give the public an opportunity to get clarity to the facts of the case, which is a little bit different than maybe what you're talking about in terms of discussing your understanding, your feelings about the facts. So, you know, maybe what you do is incorporate a time for questions or clarity into the public hearing from the members of the, of the Planning and Zoning Commission, do all of that, close that, and so that your, your discussion of the facts, you know, hopefully, you know, making sure you get all of that out there, and then your discussion of the facts is something that is after the public hearing, so that you're not being criticized for the opinion that you formed based on the facts presented. If that, you know, if you want to make that kind of a separation, maybe that's kind of a better way to think about it.
Is that kind of what you were thinking?
And I think it's consistent with what we're saying here. Again, there is no, I mean, I don't think we are discussing any change in the procedures here. I think it's a matter of the dynamic and the culture of how these meetings are, take place. And that is indeed one perspective to assume when we're having these discussions.
Any other thoughts on, tonight's a great opportunity for us to work on to... Okay. Thank you. So the next item on new business is a public hearing on city-initiated text amendments to the following articles of Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance of the Municipal Code, Article 19, Nonconforming Situations, to remove the requirement in Article 19.05 in Part 4, that a legal nonconforming use of a building or structure must be discontinued if a change in ownership, use, or tenancy occurs, and to Article 19.09, to allow for a change in tenancy, ownership, or management of an existing use of a building or structure, provided there is no change in the nature or character, extent, or intensity of such nonconforming use of the building or structure. So I open it to the city.
Thank you, Chair. The, the June 21st meeting, the commission considered some amendments, various amendments, miscellaneous ones to the Article 19, or the Unified Development Ordinance, including, part of that was a few amendments to Article 19, that's a nonconforming situations section of the UDO, particularly looking at the regulation that states when a nonconforming use of a building or structure changes ownership, use, or tenancy, the legal nonconforming use must be discontinued. The commission recommended to amend Article 19 by keeping that requirement in regarding the change of ownership, however exempting residential properties where there are no more than four dwellings. Recall the discussion, we had a lot of inquiries that come into the office regarding nonconforming situations as it relates to homes with four units or less buildings, quite a few, and we do not have a good way to track those in terms of this change of ownership, so we suggested those be exempted, and the commission agreed in your recommendation. Prior to consideration by the council, when it went on to the next level, at the July 10th meeting, there were some questions, concerns raised regarding the remaining language, the language that still remained in there for change of ownership regarding parcel, you know, larger residential developments and the commercial parcels. The council did go forward with the, the ordinance that was presented, that they voted on, took out the amendments to Article 19, they did go forward with the other changes to the UDO. At the, our last commission meeting on July 19th, we had the local business owner, Will Heinisch, voiced some concerns, if you recall, regarding the commission's recommendation regarding those amendments. I think there was some clarification needed, but he had asked if, why stakeholders weren't included, or they should be, regarding the proposed amendments. It was clarified to Mr. Heinisch that those article, changes to Article 19 were removed from the ordinance prior to the council voting on those. A few days later, we did have the monthly business coordination group meeting. We staff discussed the proposed amendments to Article 19, solicited feedback from the group. The group appreciated the ability to, you know, respond and provide feedback, appreciated the recommendation you did make regarding the exempting the four units or less, that was a benefit to homeowners, but had a concern regarding the language that was left, requiring still that any nonconforming, if there's a change of ownership, that they had to be brought into compliance. They had the concerns that the, with the language of effect on existing businesses that had change of ownership or change of use. And based on the input from the group, the public hearing notice was prepared and published for this evening, that remove the amendment, remove that provision from Article 19, providing your packet, two versions of Article 19. One was in its written at the top, amendments recommended by the commission in June 21st meeting, which you have the exemption for four units or yes, less, and then the current proposed amendments to Article 19, which removed the item regarding the change of ownership, use, or tenancy, entirely removing that from the UDO. So those two are presented. We did get, of course, public input, feedback from the business coordination group. As I mentioned, there's a letter in your packet from Rick Pryor, resident, indicating a support regarding the amendment, the nonconforming residential properties, four units or less are exempt. He indicated, or describes in his letter, kind of the case with his property he owns, that situation. We also got a copy or email today from Will Heinisch, should be copy up in front of you, noting support of the proposed amendment, the recent one with the hearing tonight that removes the ownership requirement. He cannot be here tonight, and he may, I think I mentioned the chair, we, so those are part of the record, if you want to read that into the record, Chair Atherton, that would probably be appropriate email from Mr. Heinisch. So recommendation, we're just providing the two differences there, and looking forward, you know, commission discussion on those. Whatever motion you make, I think we can easily tailor that to one or the other, or some hybrid, if you want to have discussion on that, we can certainly look at that too, so.
So the public comment that we received from Will Heinisch in an email states, "To all, please share, read my comments to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tonight. I support the proposed text amendments for the complete removal of 19.05 in Part 4. This provides protection of property rights, maintains increase in values, provide better opportunity for insurance of property, and is business resident friendly. I would also like to thank the city staff for discussing at the business coordination group. All were in favor of this proposal. This protects grandfathering, in quotes, of properties." Discussion at the business coordination group was that, in quotes, "The right time for a change is taken care of in 19.05 in Part 3," unquote, "and/or a catastrophic loss." And so now I open to anybody in the public that would like to make comment or have any questions. You're welcome to come to the podium. And I open to the commissioners for any questions or comments, or discussion. Yep.
Um, I'm, I think I am going to echo my own feelings and words from the last time we were having this discussion, and that is that I am torn, even more than before. Can I, can I start by asking a question? Before June 21st, if we have a situation of a property that is, that has five units, it is sold to another person, does the legal conforming for that potential property continues? The legal nonconform, assuming that it's illegal nonconforming?
It's legal nonconforming.
It continues as illegal nonconforming?
Well, if there's a change of ownership or aware of it, we advise whoever's inquiring that if there's a change of ownership, you have to be bringing into compliance, and no, they could not, assuming it was illegal, they could not continue the five units, you have to bring it into compliance, whatever the underlying zoning was, so that's what we advised when there was a change of ownership, when somebody inquired.
So, I'm sorry, but before the 21st, before the advice, before we did anything, was that the legal nonconforming pass with the ownership? No, it did not.
No.
And, and the advice here was that if you had the same situation, but less than four units, then the legal nonconforming, I'm trying to refresh my memory here, will be discontinued. That was what we voted on on the 21st.
You voted on, if it's four units or less, that change of ownership, if it's nonconforming, it goes on.
It goes on.
It can go.
Exactly. So, so, so the reason I'm torn, and, and is simply because there were a number of things. One of the things that we talked about is that the city of DeKalb does not have tools at hand to determine when the change of ownership occurs, and therefore, there are, there is not necessarily a way to enforce any of these changes in legal nonconforming. That was one part of the story. I think another part of the story is, how do we determine that something is a multi-unit property, that it has been like that for whatever amount of time? In other words, there, there's two sides of the burden. There is the city burden on enforcing its code, its, its own city codes, for example, whether a legal nonconforming stops at the moment of change in ownership, then there is the burden of the owner to prove that he has had a given property for a certain amount of time, and do we draw a line when, you know, that property has been multi-unit for five years versus 10 years versus 20 years? When do we, can we define, is my question, this whole grandfathering thing? I, I know that these are open questions, I am not trying to create trouble here, I'm just trying to understand.
And does that, does that grandfathering then go on forever?
Exactly. Thank you very much, I was struggling here.
Well, there's restriction in the grandfathering, if the building's destroyed beyond 50%, it has to be brought into compliance with underlying zoning. If it's, the current regulations also have, if it's discontinued for six months or more, it has to be brought into compliance. But this is strictly change of ownership. Currently, you know, if it changes ownership, use, or tenancy, it has to be brought into compliance with the proposed amendment, that would take that out. But there are other ways to, mechanisms that come up that would have to, things that would have to be brought into compliance. Currently, the change of ownership does, but as we mentioned, it's very hard to enforce or find out when that actually is occurring. So that was the proposal regarding the four units or less, that's where we're getting all the inquiries from, that's where it seems to be coming up most of the time.
And, and what is the impact in the long term? When you, when you look at maintaining a, a legal nonconforming use forever, basically, of four units or less, but yet, your comprehensive plan, as it exists now, or may be changed in the future, is, it runs anti what that character is. So you're, if you don't want that type of a use in, in a district according to your existing comprehensive plan, or changes to your comprehensive plan, then how do you change that character down the line, until some of those other things that you said come into play? Like it's abandoned, or, or uninhabitable, 50% of it's uninhabitable. My concern is, are you locking yourself into the future? Are you, are you, for lack of a better term, are you messing with the character that you're trying to achieve in a certain neighborhood? Whether it's a residential neighborhood, or whether it's a business neighborhood?
And we're trying to balance that with, I think that's why the commission recommended with the four units or less, if somebody has three units, and it's one lot for two, and they want to sell it, change ownership, and then, okay, then one tenant, you have to, you're out. You got to get out.
But what if you have, what if you have a block? But what if you have, what if you have a block of four units? Legal nonconforming, so they're there forever, right?
Yeah, and an applicant has.
Unless they burn.
Well, unless they burn, of course, yeah.
And that's the problem, that we all of a sudden, the only alternative for change is an extreme situation where the whole block burns down. Let me get, let me get this very, very straight. If I, I can easily see myself as a landlord in a situation like this, wanting to sell forward a property that I have had for 20 years. It may be, it may be actually the greatest property in the block, but I cannot sell it or the value is compromised because of city ordinances. I really understand that situation. It's a difficult situation for that landlord, for that property owner. But the city is not here to represent that city, I'm sorry, that landlord, that property owner. The city is here to represent him or her and everybody else. And everybody else includes residents. Everybody else includes people that don't even, that are not even affected, at least directly, by that property in that block. The question, of course, key word here is balance. How do you, how do we bring balance to all this? And how do we get out of perpetually locking ourselves into a legal nonconforming? When we were discussing this last time, I remember your reaction, Ms. Charlton. We're going to eternally be a legal nonconforming, a whole legal nonconforming city. How do we get out of that? And I don't, I mean, unfortunately, what I see here is that we get out of that through an extreme situation where the whole block, the whole neighborhood burns down, a tornado passes by. I mean, those are horrible tragic situations that should not be what leads us to change. I think change is here, it should happen here, nowhere else, not because of a tornado that came out and changed our destiny somehow.
Yeah, I think it gets to kind of the, and I realize the interest in serving individual citizens that are subject to this by virtue of the type of property they have. But what I struggle with, and I think just as David is, is I struggle with, at what point have you kind of, you've gone anti the future and long-term planning? What is your, what, where's your vision if you don't allow the vision to come to pass because of something you've done? We do now, in 10 years, you can't change it. Well, you could change it, but you've got precedent now.
I think there's other ways to go at it, and I know the city a few years ago created the RC-1 district, which kind of dealt, I think, with this issue, came up a lot in indicating what was the current land use on the property, and that was the zoning. I mean, there's other areas, a lot of these inquiries, you know, half of them are probably in the RC-1, the others are outside that area where you get that. But that was a mechanism that was used in the past to kind of alleviate some of that. But there's other areas in the city too. But I think the concern and by the commission, had the four units or less, was that concern for that property owner that has, you know, three units or two units and is a single family or something, and then this, they want to change the ownership, and we're indicating you can't do that unless you, if we find out first of all, and then you can't do that unless you change or remove tenants before that change of ownership happens.
I guess I keep getting back to, what does DeKalb want to be? That's kind of my bottom line. What does DeKalb want to be? Or do you want to be a community that maintains legal nonconforming? Is that the path to what your vision is? If it is, I guess so be it, but.
Well, the vision is the commission's vision, not my vision. It's the commission's, it's in the council's vision, yeah.
It's everybody, it's the vision that was established by the comprehensive plan and by all the discussions that take place in this body and at the city council level, wherever. It's, it's what has, comes out of that, which is the comprehensive plan. That's what I struggle with, is that you keep picking away at that, you know, then what, what really in the end good is? I understand changes have to be made, but be careful what changes you make as to the effect on the whole, the whole future.
I think one of the, and the dialogue has continued, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we continue to get people that are impacted by this, and it's very hard and difficult for us to deal with. The nonconforming language applies differently to property throughout the community based on when the rezoning or that, you know, that thing that created it, that time and place where it became nonconforming. And that's not necessarily the same on every property in town. So, for example, the RC-1 district, I think, was 1993, and they did a.
2009.
2009.
Oh, 93 was the rezoning of some of the properties to residential two in the south areas of town. So, you know, we've got, that's in 93, then we've got later revisions that were made, and we're trying to track all of those. One of the conversations I had just today with, with an attorney representing a property owner, has to deal with the fact that they have a nonconforming property, it changed ownership, it is entitled to one unit, and they have two units in the principal structure and two separate accessory structures. And they have documentation that it's been that way since 1958. Now, a cup, one of those structures, I think, is going to become functionally obsolescent because it really can't be repaired without exceeding the value. So, that will create a natural, you know, reduction. But we run into these issues of how, how do we deal with these? You have, in many cases, especially, you know, in the early 2000s, when people had those properties and the grannies that are there, and, and they've, they've been that way for 100 years, and it's not just them. I mean, that whole area of town, I'm learning, is spattered with two flats and three flats, and I think a lot of them have been there for a long time. So, if we continue down this path at a time where the market's picking up a little bit, some of these people are moving on or moving out, and now we're starting to see more of these sales, that's why we're getting so many calls right now. What do we do with those? Because people are coming, it's, it's not a great market. So, if we're now saying that your two or three unit building can only be sold if you reduce it to a one unit building, I'm going to have a lot of angry people in the office. And that's not the end of the world because, you know, the, the vision that was set by rezoning that property, you know, potentially or assumably in, in compliance with the comprehensive plan, was to recreate a neighborhood that would be single-family in character. I guess my question, and I, and, you know, having only been here a year and not really understanding what that, how the blocks are laid out, is, is that really the best for the community? And, and I, because I wasn't part of that conversation, and I don't know what went into the decision-making process, was it intended that, you know, this area is a spattering of old historic homes that have been converted to accommodate in-laws and other situations? Do we still want to continue that? And, and if we do, this is a process that we could continue to support. It'll be a tough process. It'll be, you know, it'll be very hard, let me just say that. But if that's where we want to be, or are we going to support these owners' interests in allowing something to continue if it's been there for 50 years? That's one question. The next question is, is there some hybrid to that? You know, do we want to figure out something else? And I'm, I'm talking about stuff that we don't have in print yet, but is there some other hybrid to that where we would say, we'll consider your request, but we want to take a look and see whether it's been, whether you've been a good neighbor, you know, are you, do you have a real parking problem? Do you have so many units in there right now that you can't accommodate parking well? Or if you make this change and we approve it, it will be subject to becoming closer into compliance? So, instead of three, we'll allow two, or, you know, I'm just guessing at this point. But I guess my point is, it's really difficult right now because of a change in ownership is something that's hard to track, and it's not very typical in other municipal codes. The ones that are typical, and it gets to your point, Commissioner Nier, is it does take a long time to realize the vision. Because, you know, waiting for it to burn down or waiting till it's so functionally obsolete that you're not going to issue a permit because the value of construction exceeds the value in our code, that you can do that, it does take much longer. So, it is a tough issue, I get it. But we're, we're also faced with tough issues now because people are trying to sell, finally, trying to sell their properties. And we're, the attorney I talked to today came in to talk about one case, but he said he had five, so. Just wanted to share the updated story.
And I, I do appreciate your story because it really highlights that, you know, part of the reason why change is difficult is because there's a cost associated with change. And sometimes it comes in the forms of these individuals who come to you explicitly talking about very specific cases in, in very quantifiable ways in which the cost, you know, is right there in our face. You know, this person may be losing a few thousand dollars here and there because the value of the property is this or that, because the city has a vision that is not consistent with what he or she has at a given time. And, and I really do appreciate your, your feedback in that, and, because it really gives context to what we're talking about. But I think, let me actually echo a little bit and rephrase a little bit of what I'm hearing here on my right from my fellow commissioner Nier, that, you know, if you, if we have a vision, a vision is different from what we have right now. That basically means that between now and the realized form of that vision, there is going to be change, the change that we're talking about. If, if we start scratching this kind of items from, from the regulations, we're basically taking away the powers that we have, the powers that the city council has to drive the change and to realize the, the vision that we want. I mean, if, if every single item is going to be a legal nonconforming, it's a matter of time before we have a city that is legal nonconforming. And might as well don't even come to this meeting.
Is it more prevalent in any part of DeKalb, or is it kind of all over?
The older areas of town. You know, so the newer subdivisions that were built with this current single-family zoning aren't going to face this issue. And it's, it's not unique to DeKalb. Every town that's over 100 years old grapples with how to deal with nonconforming. All of the rezoning, all of that looks good on paper. You know, we're going to change the code, and you comply, anything new complies with the code, and we'll let you keep doing what you're doing under a certain set of criteria. And if you hit a trigger, then you lose that, and everybody goes, okay. But then when those triggers come up, that's when, that's when we're faced with the challenges or the questions. And like I said, the trigger upon sale of property is pretty unique to DeKalb. So, it is something that, I mean, even, even the other triggers where I've worked in other communities, I've had, I've had communities adopt regulations that establish a variation process for people to come through and make specific requests to modify a nonconforming use. It still maintains its nonconforming status, but, you know, gives them the right to continue through this owner or some, some set of specific parameters. That's hard as a variation because technically you want to have very specific standards that are in place, so it's not just, I like you, I'll grant it to you, but I don't like you, I won't grant it to you. That, you know, we don't want to put you or the council in that tough position. So, if you're going to adopt something like that, you'd need some very specific standards. Want to make sure it complies with parking. We want to check the lot sizes and make sure it's not really too much crammed on a really small lot compared to the guy next door who has three times the lot size. Those kind of, those kind of measurable standards could come into this discussion.
When you have a legal nonconforming or conforming for this point, for that matter, an older home that's been split, do we have limits on occupancy or just number of units?
It's number of units. Number of occupants is, depends if they're related or not. There's a limit on unrelated people, but.
I see that as more of an issue sometimes than whether or not the property is conforming.
You're pulling from my dream. So, this is just a comment that's floating in my head, and maybe it's not, maybe it's relevant, maybe it isn't. So, let's say I have, let's say we adopt some wording, and I have a property that I've got five units or six units, and we've changed the wording, or we've put some wording in here that it has to go down to two or three or single. What, and if this is in the document, and I missed it, I apologize, but what, what, how are we going to track, or how are we going to know that when that sale has taken place, that that truly is going to come into, that they're going to do what they're supposed to do with this document, based on guidelines that we, and that they are taking it down to one after it's been sold?
And permanently, so they can't turn around and put it back once everything's been crossed and dotted too.
Well, that's difficult too, not only tracking or finding out when change of ownership, but.
Right.
If they're advised that you're not complying, when that change of ownership occurs, if they actually did reduce the number of units, is difficult too to find out when that occurs, or the enforcement is another issue too.
So, then if that were the case, that kind of, what was the point of us coming up with any wording then?
The previous language you had?
Or if we, if, if we were to come up with some type of wording, like, the enforcement piece of it, I think, bothers me a little bit. If we were to come up with something and council were to approve it, how, how is that going to be enforced? And how are we going to know? Because then, it's taking from kind of what Deb was saying, if we, if we put language in here and it's not enforced, but then it's entrapping kind of the vision, then what was the point of even coming up with some type of ordinance or wording to go in here?
I'll try.
I just, this is what's going in my head, going through my head right now. And so, that was a piece what Deb had brought up. I hadn't, that's a piece I really hadn't thought about. Like, we are trapping ourselves for the future. You said that very well. Is it important that we make some type of change? Sure it is, but I, I have to agree with what she said. I don't know, like, it's that rock and hard place situation where if we're going to create some guidelines, one, they need to be able to be, to give us that ability to go into the future, but they also need to be able to be maintained and enforced, and how are we going to do that?
Tracked and measured.
Yeah.
It seems to me, and I haven't been at DeKalb that long, I, I personally don't kind of like the way, I like the way that neighborhoods are put together with this apartment building that just plops up in the middle that's actually an apartment building. I like that. I think it's charm, but I know what she's saying, and I know what they're talking about for the future. But it seems to me the problem with this is getting to the buyer before they're the buyer. So, that they know, look, I'm looking at buying this unit that has four, five in it, and I can't keep five, because once I buy that, it has to go to four. And then to what Joellen said, what does that do to the market? So, where do we go with it? And if we can't track it, we're right back where we started.
I think that's why a lot of communities don't include, as Joellen mentioned, the ownership in the, the trigger of the nonconforming.
Because we don't know when they're going to sell it or if they've sold it until something comes up.
Is, what was the reasoning behind, or the comments, maybe that's more an appropriate question, behind the council not approving the wording? Did they?
They didn't discuss Article 19. It kind of came up before the meeting, so.
Okay.
But the business development group was concerned about the effect, and commercial, you know, that would still, just that it was not business-friendly to require the conformance with, this is a change of ownership, simple change of ownership. The knowledge, I think, Mr. Heinisch's letter, he refers to the other provision regarding the six months timeframe, if something is discontinued for six months, has to be brought into compliance. He thought that was, indicated that was the good trigger that we have currently in the ordinance that would be appropriate, other property maintenance regulations that we have, that can improve properties the way they look, et cetera. But I think it was just strictly a, pretty much, you know, in terms of business-friendly environment to require that change, if there's a change of ownership, to bring everything into compliance with the, on that site would be business-friendly. So, I think that was the general theme of that business group.
We can, I mean, there is no, there is people that are, there are people that are. We can, I mean, there is no, there is people that are, there are people that are waiting for some kind of a decision on this, but if this is something that the Plan Commission wants more thought, or you want to give us some direction to consider other alternatives, give us a little bit of direction and we'll see what we can research, but...
I think I'd like to know what other areas that have the makeup that we have similar to ours, what are their triggers? Well, how do they handle it? What have they done? As you had said, there were other places that do kind of a hybrid. What are the options? Because it's not this or, this or nothing. Is there something in between, and how do we, and then how do we enforce it? Track it, measure it?
I'm sorry, you said that there, there is people waiting on a decision on this, on, people who are about to sell? Is that what it is?
Yeah. Well, people that would like to sell, but, I mean, they're, they've come to us, they've asked the questions, they're being honest, and, you know, don't want to list it for sale unless they know what they can list it for, and they want to be able to list it for what they thought could be done. And again, I think this provision of the code came in more recently than some of the other non-provisions of the code. So, this person actually has a letter, and we have a copy of a letter, too, that says, you know, "You can continue and, can you continue the non-conformity with four units in compliance with Article nineteen," which we believe Article nineteen at that point didn't include this provision. So, again, they're just trying to continue what they thought they had, and, you know, at some point, some modifications to the code were made about ownership, and it's affected their ability to sell the property.
And we should be as open and graceful in thanking those that come forward, you know, and honest, you know, to us all in this process because we all benefit from, from that honesty and that forwardness. There, there are two things. First, what Ms. Buckley said here a minute ago, I think, is, it may be one thing that we can do, which is to look at what other communities do, just to give us a frame of reference, where to go from. And the other thing, I want to echo something that you said a few minutes ago, which is that we may need to be a little bit more creative. We may need to find a middle point or a new point, some, somewhere new. The, finding out what other communities do may give us a reference, some ideas that we can pull from to come up with our own new thing, might be a blend. There might be a time component. I suspect that we can do that, where we establish some ordinances and they come, or the city council establishes some ordinances and they come with time, you know? They, they don't necessarily have to be enforced tomorrow or anything like that. I, I, I think this is a, this is, it's a topic that I have struggled with significantly, precisely because of the topics, or the arguments that we have raised here regarding the ability to lock our future in our present time. And for creativity, time is necessary. And I would, I would suggest that we move, that we continue this discussion at some point in the future such that we give ourselves time to think a bit more about this. I know that I will think more about it if, if we have the time.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So, keeping in mind that the application of this change would apply to our older neighborhoods where we have those, you know, bizarre apartment buildings and land uses kind of thrown into the area, is, how do you guys, I know what your opinion is. Does the rest of the Plan Commission feel the same? Is that something unique we would like to preserve for the community? Or, you know, I think our comprehensive plan is pretty old, and that's one of the things we've been talking to the council about, trying to get it updated. So, if our plan from ten or fifteen years ago represented a vision that people were in that subdivision mode, and I'm a single family, and, you know, kind of the separation of land uses, that was pretty typical back then. I think times, you know, people like the more urban feel, like when you're in the city and you kind of have those integrated. How do you guys feel about that? I mean, is that, is, are the older areas and that character that comes with them something that you think the city might be changing to? Or are we still wanting to achieve the objectives of reduced density and kind of separating land uses, which our current plan clearly does? Silence.
Well, I, I think that older, I, I think the key to the health of a community are in their older areas. I mean, those are typically the most stressed. They're typically the ones that are most overoccupied. They're typically the ones that have changed the most over time. And, and so, again, I think it's a matter of, if the vision for the community is to return to the original character of, that was intended for that particular neighborhood, then, then changing this is not going to do that. Changing that will only facilitate what's happening now. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I don't know that we have that answer. I don't think that's just for us to make. Again, I don't think, although we can, we're a very good group and have a lot of brain power here, I, I don't think it's us by ourselves that are gonna make that particular vision stand.
Right, right. An amendment to the comprehensive plan or some, you know, the visioning would, would be that process. It would start here, but then it would need to go through the hearings and be approved by the council. I was just asking because it kind of makes a difference in how we would approach any zoning for the current issues.
And I think we've got different types of older neighborhoods in this city. And I, I'm in an older neighborhood where most of the residences, the rental residences are single-family. They may have more than that living in there, but they're one home with one unit. But there's a lot of areas in the city where they're not that. They're, you know, three flats or two flats or duplexes or these random apartment buildings that have four or six units in them. Does that add to the charm of the neighborhood?
Depends on how it's-
Depends where it's at, I think.
How they take care of it.
Right. So, I think that's hard to, yeah, that's hard to answer.
And just background, I think the, as I understand, a couple of years ago, the BUD O was changed, where the ownership was added in as, you know, language added in when there's a change of ownership has to be brought in compliance. It was based on a commercial, more of a commercial focus than residential, but it's had, obviously didn't distinguish between the two. So, it's had the most effect certainly on the residential, the two, the three, the four units, definitely. But it was intended for the commercial, I think.
And I, a little bit, I chuckled to, to Deb's comment about, you know, if we want to change back to where neighborhoods used to be, yet this isn't, I mean, the only way to change that back is to make them non-rentals. And I don't think, you know, that's obviously not what we want to do because not everybody can afford to purchase their own home. But, yeah, I, there's not an ideal way, I think, to get back to that old neighborhood But I, along with my fellow commissioners, I think I'd like some more, too. And maybe some information kind of going to what was mentioned earlier. If they have grandfathered clauses in there, do they have specific dates, you know, grandfathered from nineteen fifty back or nineteen seventy back?
Is it lifetime or when does it-
Yeah. Like, is there, is it kind of sectored into a date rather than just grandfathered in?
Finite or infinite? Does it go on forever?
Yeah.
I've seen a few of those where there's a date, like, certain number of years after the ordinance has passed, have been typically smaller or less expensive improvements like illegal, or usually structures under a certain value perhaps that can be easily taken away compared to a home or, you know, commercial building. But we'll take a look at that, the timing part, or also in there.
May I say one, respond to the question or comment on the comprehensive plan? I, I, I think, you know, one of the things that is difficult about that question is that a, a vision for a city is, is a difficult thing because the, it, it has to change. It has to continuously change, but at the same time, it cannot change too much because change doesn't happen overnight. So, to change a neighborhood in, in a given direction takes time. If you change the vision, the direction in which we were going, all of a sudden, what happened with that investment, initial investment that you made for the initial, you know, vision that you had? So, I understand that, that, that on the one hand, we wanted to change the, the vision, but at the same time, it cannot change too much. One of the ways in which this, this came to head to me about two weeks ago, I found myself returning to a, a huge city in the world. And, and one of the things that I found myself doing in this big city was walking from, from block to block, to block to block, long, long distances, over twenty steps according to my phone every day for about four or five days. And the one thing that you're doing all the time is not only walking, but dealing with people. Huge population density in this city, this big city. And I was asking myself, "My goodness, we, we struggle so much in our little city of DeKalb for population density, and these people, you know, this is their middle name, population density, high population density." And, and some people may hate the city. There is a lot of people that hate the city, but I can tell you that nine million people love that city. They're there every day, and, and either, either they love it or they're depressed because of where they find themselves. But, but they're there, and there, there is the appeal, you know, of this, of the city. So, somehow, certainly, we don't want that population density in DeKalb. I am not arguing in favor of that population density in DeKalb, but something, something, there is something to learn from that experience, that population density is not necessarily that bad, that there might be something that we may gain by having certain, high population density in certain parts of our city. And, and we shouldn't have just this line, red line, red number that tells you, you cannot go beyond that, you know, population density. In other words, and repeating myself a little bit here, the, I'm all in favor of, of looking at the comprehensive plan again and again and again because it, it should be changing, aware, of course, that it cannot change too much.
Not too fast. You just gotta catch up.
Yeah.
You gotta catch up.
So, with that being said, we have to continue this public hearing, correct? Because we're needing more information.
Yeah. Continue the public hearing and in the motion, note the date, August twenty-third, and at this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Before we finalize this, I do want to ask if there's anyone in the public that would like to give any comment or questions since our discussion? Yep, go ahead and come up to the podium. If you'd, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Tyler, Tyler Parkley, six twenty-four South First Street. I just came to take notes for-
Can you pull the microphone?
I just came to take notes for a class, but I actually live in a neighborhood that has this type of residences. So, I just wanted to ask what exactly, is this about a new ordinance or just reviewing, is it from revising the comprehensive plan? I just want to know from my own research.
It's amending the Unified Development Ordinance, the non-conforming section of the, the zoning ordinance of the Unified Development Ordinance. We're not looking at the cop plan at this time.
Okay.
It's strictly the Unified Development Ordinance, non-conforming situations, and particularly with ownership change.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. That's all I needed.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion by commissioners? Okay, so we will continue this public hearing to August twenty-third?
Continue motion.
Can we get a motion to continue, please?
To continue?
Yes.
Correct, I'm sorry. So, I'll take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue this public hearing and the discussion to August twenty-third.
Okay. Motion made by Buckley?
Second.
Second by Castro. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, so we are continuing this. It's passed with, I didn't catch the number. Five.
I think it was five to one.
Five to one, sorry.
That near you.
And so, this will be continued to August twenty-third. Any reports, items for next meeting?
In addition to this further discussion, we'll have a public hearing on for Cell Tower, thirteen hundred South Seventh Street, special use permit.
If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by Pearl. Second by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.